Welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools Budget and Finance Subcommittee Meeting Friday, February 3rd, 2023 at 9:00 AM. We are, I, so I just want to let everyone know, I'm having ongoing vision issues. So the superintendent is going to read our statement about being online and whatever else has to be read because I just can't see anything. So I just want to let everyone know that. So Christine, if you wouldn't mind reading our online statement?
I do not. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' June 16th, 2021 Order extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 70A, Section 20, and this meeting is being recorded by Zoom and will be posted on the GCTV site.
Wonderful. Thank you. Let's do a roll call. Member Martini?
Present.
Thank you. Member Johnson Mossad?
I am here.
And Susan Exstrom, I am also here. Sorry, I didn't go alphabetically. I typically do that, but as I said, I can't see. So with us, we also have the superintendent and Andy Pickett, our business manager, finance director, whatever fancy title he has that goes with what he's doing. Also, I see the assistant superintendent and Diane. I'm Susan Exstrom, and again, I can't read anything, so I can't see your last name, but I know that you're.
Schindler.
Thank you. You're the new finance person for the city. My apologies. I've been having some troubles for a while. Anyway, and with that, I believe we have everyone. We do have a quorum and calling the meeting to order. First order of business is an update on FY24 budget development. Christine and Andy, if you would, go ahead. Just give us a little idea of what it is you're doing. We don't have any additional papers on it, so I assume that just enough.
We, yeah, we are in the, right now, we have gotten all of the department submissions for budget. Many lines are equal to last year. There are some additional staff requests. I believe at this point, we are anticipating four staff, two of which are additional first grade teachers at Newton and Federal Street due to the bubble we have in kindergartens there. But certainly whether or not we actually need to increase staffing is to be seen. We'll get a better idea after we have our kindergarten registration, but we need to anticipate that that will be an actual need. So we're in the process of cross-double checking all of our staffing because of the changes and movement we've had. Not necessarily all people leaving, but people moving within the district into different positions. So we're in the middle of that process. And next Friday, we are scheduled, Andy, Karen, and I, for a final review of the superintendent's budget, and then it will be posted as required, and we are going to be on track for a March 2nd budget hearing.
Sounds good. I have a question. Is it the request for additional staffing, is that quite a bit different from last year? Is it more than last year? Is it sort of the same? I'm just trying to gauge where we are.
Different, in some cases, different needs. I think we're fairly, one of the challenges that we have that we need to work through before I give a final budget request number for FY24 is working with the factor that we have ESR funds available, but the staff that are funded through ESR, we would like to keep following the expiration of the grant funds. So really working to see how we can utilize the grant funds most effectively and continue to maintain the staffing. Last year, some of the new staff requests were put into the local budget request, and some were funded straight out of the grant, knowing we had that money for two years. So right now, we're working through that process of how best to allocate the grant money to preserve staff and benefit the district. But this year, two first grades, a special ed teacher. All right, maybe it's three positions. Sorry.
Only, only one additional special ed teacher. That's great. That's usually.
One additional, but last year, we added a few positions, so it would be maintaining those.
Yep.
We have a program. I apologize.
The 504 coordinator position.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. 504 coordinator. We're looking to maintain the special ed teachers that we increased in the budget last year and then add one additional due to a program increasing in size. The 504 coordinator request is coming because those are, they have been stipends in the budget, but what we're finding is, is two things. One, it's a significant workload and folks are less inclined to apply for that position. And two, it does require a significant level of knowledge around the law and all the procedures. And so the potential of rotating staff year to year, having the position requires a level of training every year. So the learning curve is, is sort of an issue. So even in talking with GEA, there was a discussion about maybe this needs to be a person who is consistent and just does 504 for the district. So we are putting that into the budget to see if we can do that. We think it'll have a significantly positive effect on student programming.
Yeah, well, and not only do they have to know a lot and have a comfort with the law just to do that job, laws change every year, particularly rounding this cohort of students that you're talking about. So, so it's a heavy load to carry, certainly. I am glad to hear, I am glad to hear that we aren't looking for five additional special ed educators, only because that means that we are working towards building the department and maintaining those employees over time. I'm thrilled to hear that. That's been a struggle for a while.
We are continuing to work on that internally. It's a priority for us.
Great. Member Martini, do you have any questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to call on you, Glenn and Kate, because again, I can't see anything. So, sorry. You're on mute, hon. I can see that.
No, I don't.
Member Johnson Mossad, do you have any questions?
I do. Is there a process for the administration and the school committee to make budget requests?
The administration submits all of their, Andy sends out to all department level administrators. I say that because it includes technology and, you know, facilities. It's not just building principles. They are asked to look at their departments, get requests from staff around needs, and so they submit those. And then they have individual budget meetings with me, Andy, and Karen. So their requests are built into budget requests. And then school committee, once I present superintendent's budget to the committee, you folks can do whatever you'd like with it.
Well, I guess the, the question I have is, I've been a little concerned wanting a little bit more administrative support for the school committee. It concerns me having the superintendent, who obviously gets paid a very high pay range, and we want you to be thinking about bigger things than taking minutes at meetings and all of that stuff. I would really like to see a recording secretary at, at school committee subcommittee meetings. And I just wonder if that, maybe you could include that in the, if there's a way to include that in the superintendent's budget or an option or some numbers to bring to us to consider?
If, if you folks want to direct me to build that into the budget, I am absolutely happy to do so. But I guess in my perspective, Glenn, I have to attend the meeting anyway, and it's really not a heavy lift for me to take minutes. But if you folks prefer, that's not the structure. Just say that, and it will be added to the budget. I just would share that it would be a school committee priority, not a superintendent priority, but happy to do that if that's the, if that is the request.
Yeah, okay. Maybe I'll chat with you offline then, because I, I mean, I see, I see you taking minutes at the policy meetings and stuff, but I haven't actually seen the minutes for a long time. And I'm assuming, I was just assuming it was on a very long list of things you have to do that are more important than writing up minutes meetings, you know, so.
No, quite happy. Just, you know, I think we've established, if you just shoot me an email or a text, that I, I believe I've been responsive. So happy to, but.
Yeah, sorry. I shouldn't, I guess I should have talked to you about it before this setting, but I just thought, I just assumed that a superintendent would be, kind of have too many things on her plate for that kind of stuff. So that's my interest. I would like to free up bandwidth, any kind of bandwidth I can for you to do your job. That's the intent.
Well, thank you. We had, you folks have a recording secretary. It really would just be an issue of me reaching out to Susan to see if she's willing and available for the subcommittee meeting since, you know, you have it. So.
I think in the past, she hasn't been. So anyway.
Yeah, not, not a big problem. So that is fine.
No criticism implied.
No, no, thank you. That's fine.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We did have someone in the past, which was how it sort of got to be that we were audio recording and then video and then, you know, here we are today. So that is, that is a role that we had in the past. And I think it was, it was someone that was very part-time and was just attended meetings essentially and did the, the minutes.
That is not a huge issue.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Oh, I was just saying that. That was my only question. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Sorry. Anything else? Member Martini, have you come up with anything fancy you want to ask? You're on mute. If you're talking, I can't see.
She's not talking yet, but.
Okay.
This app is not cooperating with me. And nothing major. I was just thinking, I have heard some comments and concerns from folks about the music department. And I wondered what is currently devoted to that and what you anticipate for that in the budget?
Yeah, happy to. So, so there's a few different pieces to the music department. We have elementary music teachers that are providing music classes to all of our elementary buildings. So all of our students have access to music instruction. We currently have a schedule that we're talking to the GEA about because they have raised some questions about how the current schedule is formulated. So we're going to be having a meeting with our specials teachers and union representation in the next week to talk about that. And then the outcome of that could impact a future budget request, but I, I need to hold on that for additional discussion. We have a fourth grade instrument teacher that is in place and is still in the FY24 budget. And then we have a music teacher that is split between middle school and high school, and we made that decision for this current school year because we had a transfer request from our music teacher at the middle school last year. She's in a math position for us this year. And quite truthfully, as I shared at a school committee meeting, we had very few requests from students at the high school for music electives. And so once we saw the numbers of students who had chosen music as an elective, it was a financial decision to have that teacher split. Because at that stage, they would have been at the high school teaching courses that would not be music because no one had, had asked for music courses. So we are doing course selections. We're just about at course selection time, so we'll at least have a general idea and can update the budget if we get it prior to going to public hearing or, you know, we can always make an adjustment, adjusted request after. But that's why we don't have a full-time music teacher at the middle, at the high school. We had very few student requests.
I wonder if it's, it's, so I'll pump the bear on this. I wonder if it's a matter of chicken or the egg. If you have a music offering, people would take it or not? I don't know. If, if you have the teacher, would people take the class? Or do you have to have the class?
Well.
Student body would be able to have the teacher.
When, when the course selections for this current school year were done, we had a full-time music teacher available at the high school. So I think the chicken and egg situation there was pretty clear. I have talked with Derek about, certainly feel free to add an elective to the potential course offerings to see what kind of numbers we get. So he's going to, to do that. But again, if we have extremely small numbers of students who request a course, I'm, I would struggle with offering it as we would with any elective. Those are, those are conversations we're having about all of our electives. I struggle to offer a section of a course with three or four students in it.
Yeah. So I think there is a little bit of a build it and they will come thing when it comes to music, especially because of the way that skill in music develops. So if we don't have a really robust elementary program, then we're not going to probably have a lot of middle schoolers and certainly high schoolers who then have developed any skills or, you know, advanced interest in music. So then, of course, they're not going to want to. And also, it has to do with like, what type of students are attracted to Greenfield schools. So if people know that Greenfield doesn't have a robust music program, then they're probably going to choose to go elsewhere if that's their interest. So. Are we, in terms of elementary, are we sharing one teacher amongst the elementary schools for music?
No, we have several music teachers. They do go to multiple buildings at this time, but all of our students have access to music instruction. There's a, there's a rotating schedule, so all of our students in all three elementaries get music.
And that's recent. We used to have kind of want some this inequity among the schools for that. So maybe we will see over time an increase in interest in music if we're making more investments in elementary.
Right, in the future.
Certainly hope that, that would be. And Ollie McFadden, who's our bands teacher, is, you know, he seems to have quite a list of students that have signed up for music lessons with him, you know, instrument lessons. And he's very excited about building the program. So I think now we've had that offering available at the elementary and certainly hope that we start to see numbers move.
I think that's great because trying to do things on your own, you know, as a family, music lessons are expensive, instruments are expensive, and a lot of kids are just, you know, they would be shut out of that if it wasn't available to them at school. So.
I also want to share.
That's great.
We still participate with the Strings for Kids. I mean, it's a financial obligation that the district has, has participated in. I think next year, Andy, you can update. I believe our anticipated contribution is about $25,000 for that. And we have a fair number of students that participate, and their numbers have been growing. So there are opportunities for our students, but I think we're all on the same page in saying that we would love for our secondary music program to grow.
Thanks, Christine.
Not a problem.
Sorry about that. That was my phone. Are we good with this? That, oh, someone's raising their hand.
Nope, that was a mistake.
Okay. Okay. So I think unless anyone else has any more questions, we are going to move on to the third topic that I can't read. Medicaid reimbursement discussion, including information from Diana Schindler. There's your name, City Finance Director. So I asked the superintendent to add this to the agenda because, you know, as members of the school committee, we've had a discussion about there is Medicaid funding that we are reimbursed for, and it typically stays with the city. However, there's a larger discussion to be had around that, I think. And Christine, would you mind, or Andy, whoever, Christine, if you'd prefer, Andy, explain how it is that the Medicaid reimbursement happens, where it comes from, why it happens?
I'll let Andy, because I was talking. We'll hear his, his melodious voice for a little while.
So organizations can get reimbursed from the government for services that are provided, medical therapeutic services in addition to some other things. If their families are Medicaid eligible, there is a admittedly very cumbersome process to get this reimbursement, but we work with Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative to do that. And so, you know, it's the tracking of everything from, you know, supplies that are purchased for health-related materials that would go towards the providing of services to anyone, family, student who is Medicaid eligible, families are Medicaid eligible. Medicare, excuse me. And then it goes through process, and then it, by law, it use, by law, it is a general fund revenue that comes to the city or the town. So they, we get, you know, the, do all the legwork for it, and then it comes as, in the form of a general fund revenue. Once it's all finalized and verified with the government, then it comes back and we get a, you know, a reimbursement for, you know, and historically, Greenfield's been receiving anywhere between 200, $210,000, it seems, per year for that reimbursement. So.
So is it, so when we are, when, when the items that are being purchased are being paid for, or whatever it is that would be appropriate under Medicaid, are those coming out of the general fund budget or are those coming out of the school district's budget?
School, well, school's general fund budget. It's a school's.
So the, the school district, so when we're doing our budgeting, that is something that we have to include with our budgets. And when the money comes back, it goes into the general fund for the city.
That's correct.
So if I could just, could I just, hi, Susan?
Hi.
Can I just sort of follow then what happens to it when it comes to the city, just to kind of, you know, put, put the end to that?
Close the circle, please.
So it does come, as Andy said, it comes in as a, a general fund receipt. So we get it on what we call, you know, our local receipts. And when those are closed out, those go into free cash and those become available to the city and, you know, to the school if there is a need for additional funds. So I think that, and also I would say that we figure that money into our, our local receipts anyway, you know, when we're working through our budget. So in, in some respect, I mean, we always try to be very conservative with those receipts. So we don't, you know, as Andy said, we do sort of have a trend of what we see for the, the revenue of Medicaid. And, but I think until just recently, we just took it as a miscellaneous revenue. You know, again, that closes out to our free cash. But the free cash has been historically used to fund the city and the schools, you know, when necessary, if additional funds are needed. So, I mean, it goes to capital purchases. It goes to things like that as well. It's going, it's gone to, this year, it's going, you know, we are going to be putting some into, we put some into contract stabilization. And for this year's Medicaid receipts, we did agree to forward that along to the school as part of their contract discussions as well. So that, so that's something that this year, you know, we have agreed to do. But in future years, there's been a discussion about how to and if and how to move those funds to, forward to the school.
Okay, because I, you know, you'll, you'll understand when I say that there's always rumors going around about how funds are allocated. And I guess what, what concerns me is that the, the upfront for this comes from the school district's budget, and we are consistently cut. And what we also know is that we are not fully reimbursed by the state for our special education needs. And so not only are we, as, as, as the, as the district and as this budget that we have that keeps growing, because that's what budgets do, they never shrink. We know that special education costs are going to increase, and we are going to continue to not be fully reimbursed. Our budget continues to not be met at its needs. And so when the Medicaid money comes back, we already have a, have been undercut in our budget to begin with. And, you know, and I, and I've heard that those funds will be coming back for a number of reasons. We, we are working very hard to work within our budget, and we've done that consistently. And, and when there are any issues with our budget, it, we, the superintendent brings it to us immediately. We discuss it immediately. We bring it to the city council immediately and, and discuss our options. And we work very hard to do that. However, when I'm hearing that there's, so you said that it goes into free cash and goes to the general fund. Well, the reason that that free cash exists is because, for a number of reasons, but not due in any small part because of this Medicaid reimbursement that the city is maintaining. And frankly, we need the cash.
So I think, I think, I think exactly that is where we're sort of at with the discussion. That's, that's what we're hearing. We're hearing that from you, and that's what, you know, I think has been, you know, clearly brought forward. I, just a couple of things. I do understand what you're saying about the budget being reduced. I mean, I think generally when we receive, you know, the department budgets from all departments, including the school, you know, we have a limited amount of funding that, as you know, that's available. So we often are making reductions, you know, across the board to, to manage that side of, you know, the revenue side. So I think that, and, and last year, the school did get an additional, you know, quite a substantial higher appropriation, I think, than, you know, if I, I, again, I wasn't here, but that's sort of my understanding that the, the appropriate. And as you said, it's always going to go up because budgets are going up. So I guess that's where, with this idea of how to really make sure that that money is available for the special education needs, as you referred to, or, or the needs of the school, which generally, you know, much of them are, you know, to that end. I think that's why Liz had originally brought up the idea of having this reserve fund that would be part of the school budget annually, and it would be, you know, sort of considered when we're doing the budget to have that reserve fund in there. It is specific to special education purposes. So I'm not sure if that's going to be as useful, you know, but that's what the thought was. If you are asking for a supplemental, and then there was discussion about doing a supplemental appropriation.
I'm, just let me take a step back. I don't mean to interrupt. When you say, when you say reserve fund, what do you mean by that?
So that basically a reserve fund in your budget, like the city is able to put a reserve fund in their budget, and that can be spent with the approval of the city council for unforeseen expenses. The schools are not allowed to have just a general, a general reserve fund for unforeseen expenses because the city has one. You're, you would have access to that reserve fund as well, just like any other department. But basically, it's held by the city council. The, the city, or excuse me, the school could have a reserve fund. It has to be, it's, it's a statutory, it's, there's a statutory reference that says what it can be used for. So basically can be used toward unanticipated or unforeseen special education costs. So if you have those, which you just said, those are generally going up and you do, you know, I don't know if they're unanticipated, but they are going up maybe sometimes more than you anticipate. You, that money would just be available for that. It would have to be voted by the school committee and by the, by the council in a majority. in a majority vote, but it's only really for those purposes. So I, it seems likely that those votes would, you know, would, would pass.
So, but what you're talking about is the, and again, I'm struggling in many ways, is the accounts that have been set up. Uh, what, Andy, Christine, can you help me with? What are the contract stabilization, stabilization accounts? Is that what they're called?
Right.
Yeah, right.
The, I think the, the somewhat, I'm, that, I think some of the confusion is the interchanging of the use of reserve fund and stabilization. So the, the statute that she, that Diane's referring to is the section twenty-four of chapter two eighteen of the Acts of two thousand sixteen, to bore you with the technical detail. And that is the, that's the creation of, and the authorization of this special education stabilization fund.
And.
Which has been created in Greenfield, that does exist already is the, the thing. And so, but the thing about it is that the fun, you know, what the, some of the discussions that were going on is that, uh, the funds, and I'm, I'm reading straight from the uh, law and also the memorandum that Desi issued about it, which is funds can only be expended or transferred out after a majority vote of the school committee and the select board or city council. You know, so in order to access that would require the, you know, request from the school committee or superintendent to the school committee, the school committee approval and then to the city council as well. So it, it creates, you know, that I'm, don't get me wrong, I would like to think that those boards would, you know, if we were to go there with the need for accessing it, but you know, I'm going on and one of the discussions that we had as far as thought process of this was, say, efficiency of operations, expediency of why go through those motions where, you know, and the discussions that we had when Liz was here was that the Medicaid money was not included in, in the budget per se. And so we can, you know, that's a discussion for another time, because Diane, Christine and I had met and talked about the fact that we think that that was not true. Um, uh, but the, the thought of an agreement where, uh, the easier thing of a supplemental appropriation of once the Medicaid funds were determined what they would be, you know, a supplemental appropriation, it accomplishes the same thing with, I would say, uh, from our point of view, less hoops jumped without belittling the process.
Right.
And just my.
Your two cents. Um, so I guess my question is, and, and I'm gonna get a little esoteric here. Um, those stabilization funds actually were not set up by Liz, they were set up by Bill Martin, who, um, for, um, better or worse, was actually something of a money hawk and really worked very hard to get as much funding into the city of Greenfield as he possibly could. Um, and uh, there are some things about that that I admire because we needed it. There are some things about that that I question, as does everyone else on the planet or everyone else who sort of paid attention. Um, the problem, and, and so Diane, you don't know this about me, but I don't know if anyone does. My grandfather was one of the first generation IRS people. And so what that taught me and taught everyone in our family is that you have to be clean with money, you have to be transparent with money. Um, and to be afraid of being audited. Now, I don't necessarily feel that way, but I do believe in what he said about being clean with money. So if that money is put into the special education stabilization account and I don't know, our buses, our bus system explodes and we aren't able to provide services, but there's money sitting in the special ed stabilization account. We would need to access that money for things that are not necessarily related to special education. And in order to do that, we would have to, and I'm not, by no means am I advocating for this. We, what would happen, because the world is the way, the world, money would get moved around to make it look like we needed it for special education. And I'm not a big fan of that. And Andy's not a big fan of that. Christine's not a big fan of that. So my concern is by putting that money into the special education stabilization account, and if we withdraw that because we're using it for teacher contracts or to buy whatever it is, because as with the city, there's a large budget and it gets allocated in various ways. We have a large budget that get allo- gets allocated in various ways. We would be working outside of what the agreed upon standards are. And so you can understand how I personally would have some concerns going to the city council and saying, hey, we need this money for special education, but we may have had to manufacture the reason for it. I don't like that. And I don't, um, this feels very much like the city trying to micromanage what it is that we're doing. And I certainly hope that that isn't the case. But I, but I know that we have clean budgets and we check in with everyone and I just, I don't understand the rationale when it is very obvious that we're going to need this funding. That, and I, and I heard you say that this year, that's not what's going to be happening. But in the future, we will have contracts and we will have other things that we need to fund. And we manage our budget well and there's ridic-, there's, there's an unbelievable amount of oversight because we have budget hawks. Not unlike Christine and Andy, I spend some time poking around and I poke them to make sure that, that I'm seeing what they're seeing and I know that they're far more educated in this than I am. So having to request to the mayor to do a finance form or whatever it's called, to bring the city council for them to say, yeah, you're managing your budget well, why would we keep this from you? Sign the piece of paper and then bring it back to us. That's at least a two-month process. When we know that we are going to need funding, because as we, we've acknowledged, we are getting cut every year. So for spending, we need the money to come back to us. And I've also heard it goes back to the general fund. Um, so I, I guess I don't understand that. And, um, I guess my other question is, if the school committee or is there, is there any other department that has this kind of thing, that they provide a service, the city gets reimbursed for it in their general fund, but does not return that money to the department to use?
There are other accounts like that, yes. Like, um, we do have some of those set up as revolving funds in the city. But then if there's additional, so there's money left in those revolving funds to, to spend out of for those services. But then the additional monies are transferred into the general fund receipts, like building inspection permits is one of them that I'm aware of. We keep the parking receipts. We don't use the, um, you know, we have parking enforcement that we pay, we fund out of it, but we keep the additional receipts for that and those things. We don't keep them separate. So there are, um, there are others that we do, but the, um, you know, I think the Medicaid, it's a little bit different because it's not, um, I mean, you have the, the school's been excellent about recouping the money. Um, but I've been, you know, this is the, uh, not the first community I've worked in, I've worked in several and there's different levels of, of, um, you know, uh, re- reimbursement, if you will, like there's different levels of what, what's available for reimbursement. So I think it's not always a consistent thing. So that's why I think it's, you know, done the way that it is. And so, and as far as, I just want to mention, so the stable, uh, so you're right, we do, the stabilization fund, um, and what Andy said, you know, is correct, the stabilization fund does exist and there's really no money in it right now, very little. Um, and I don't know why it was set up originally, I think for these purposes. Um, and, and so recently Liz talked about the reserve fund, just as, as it's a similar mechanism, but with less restrictive vote, because you don't need the two-thirds vote, it's a majority vote. But all the things that you said about, you know, having to go through that process are true. I just, I just think that, I mean, it's really gonna be up to the mayor to decide what she, how she wants to, you know, uh, to the mechanism for moving the money, um, the motivation for, you know, have those discussions, um, through the school committee. But I think, um, I just, I would say, as far as the adding it to, so when you're saying the school doesn't have access to those funds, I understand what you mean because it's perceived to go into the general fund and through free cash. But it is all sort of one pool of money that we use to determine what we can fund through the school to some extent. Not the free cash, I get that. We don't, we don't want to use that in our operating budget and we don't, we don't budget for that. But my point is that we do the appropriation for the school. Um, it, it's, it's going to have to fit into the entirety of what the city's funding is that's available. So basically you're, in a sense, just asking us, and, and, and rightfully, I understand the motivation behind the ask for the Medicaid reimbursement, because you do the work that it takes to get the money back. But in a sense, it's, you're, you're asking for an additional appropriation based on, you know, the Medicaid, just to have that. You know, I guess it's, I just want to be sure, be clear going forward that it doesn't just get sort of mixed up in the appropriation piece, if that makes sense. Like, I, that's why I think the set aside is, is useful in some sense, because you always have those costs. Like even the buses, you mentioned the transportation, you use that for your special education, I understand. So if your buses exploded, that money could be used for those if they work towards special education. So I think there's a lot of costs that could be used to cover and it just, it just makes it not get bundled up into the appropriation in the future and then be at risk of just a different bucket of the appropriation having to be less, if that makes sense.
And I just, here, um, Susan, I know that you're, you shared your vision is, um, an issue currently, but Andy, Andy raised his hand and then Glenn.
Please do.
So I, I guess I, I would want to say, um, that, uh, so this is, and just to clarify, uh, Susan and, and so these, the whole thing about the Medicaid, these are the rules. It's unfortunate, there was X number of years ago, school districts were able to do the Medicaid, it came and then we had a Medicaid revolving account or whatever. A lot of our clients didn't do anything. And then Department of Revenue said, nope, it's gotta be a general fund revenue. Now, the process being, and once, once, uh, you know, it's, it, I think that, I don't say the confusion, but it also adds a layer, like once the Medicaid funds come to the city, for lack of a better phrase, they're no longer Medicaid funds, they're general fund receipts, that's everything. It just happens that if we look at, say, the free cash or even total general fund revenues, two hundred thousand dollars of that could be quote unquote identified as being generated from the Medicaid reimbursements.
Right.
What some communities do, and this is one of the things that when we were discussing and still under discussion, was like, once this Medicaid number is certified, a lot of our clients' towns will end up doing at a fall town meeting. Or as we've discussed, a potential supplemental appropriation of, okay, so it's been identified that last year's Medicaid receipts were two hundred thousand dollars. At the town meeting, there will be a warrant article for appropriating two hundred thousand dollars from free cash, whatever, to the schools for XYZ expenses. Using your transportation bus blow up example, um, you know, whether or not we could, you know, I, I justified as a sped related expense or whatnot, you know, there's the quote unquote, I'm gonna say legitimate shell game of we could end up going if the money were to be put in a state sped stabilization fund and say, we want to use these funds for, you know, sped tuitions. Uh, then we would take whatever we had budgeted for in the local budget for sped tuitions and do a budget transfer to move those to deal with our blown up buses, you know, per se, or, you know, so there's that, that process. And in saying, so this goes back to, again, now while editorialized, my view of putting it in a stabilization fund just creates for me, an administrative wise, somewhat, I'm gonna say unnecessary steps where a supplemental appropriation then eliminates one of those demarcation points that would require an approval of i- i- using the sped stabilization fund, the two, two boards, the school committee and the city council.
Thank you.
Um, Susan Glenn had raised his hand next, and then Kate has raised her hand.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know if you can see the little eye.
I can't, so that's perfect.
Okay.
Uh, I won't pretend to have followed everything that's happened in this phone conversation. But I think what I'm basically hearing is, it's almost like, um, buckets of money. If we take two hundred thousand dollars out of this, uh, that we think of as ours, because we pay for it and we're, the city's getting reimbursed for it, then the city's gonna have two hundred thousand dollars less to play with when it comes to budget. So we're kind of back where we started from, which is, you know, the challenge of city budgets and also, you know, wanting to have, uh, you know, it really relying on, on the mayor to a certain extent. Um, so and, but maybe I'm hearing that there's a possibility that different, i- is there some advantage to this money over other types of money that we get? Is that part of what I might have missed in the conversation? Is there something special about this money that we can do stuff with it? Andy's raising his hand.
If I can answer that. So, so Glenn, what it is, is like, that one of the things that this, you know, when this started and it was like, I want to say meant, might have been, been day one of Diane on the job. Uh, we had a, a Zoom meeting, uh, where Liz, the mayor, uh, Danny, Christine and I, and I think Gene Wall was on it as well, um, talked about this. And Liz was the one that brought up the, the Medicaid fund to help settle the contract and some mechanism to see if that we would be authorized to create a, in a sense, a contract stabilization fund on the school side that we could use and then use the Medicaid fundings, because she had stated at the time and was a concern, you know, because, you know, I'm, I have to report out how much of the Medicaid receipts we get for the schools to the state. And, and she said, and again, I'm not saying that it was, you know, she was very clear and I, I made it clear that, you know, I wanted to say, are you sure? She said, we don't use the Medicaid funds for the budget. You know, for the school, she made that, she, you know, it was pretty explicit that, you know, in a sense, so I'm gonna say, for lack of a better phrase, I'm sitting there at this meeting and Christine was saying the same thing, Jean was feeling the same way, which was this, for lack of a better phrase, is it somewhat found money that was not being necessarily identified. Now, again, let's fast forward to what, you know, Diane has since discovered. And when I went and looked at the city's budget online, you know, it's, it clearly shows general fund revenues being collected as a local receipt or another receipt of Medicaid receipt. So we started this with the understanding, maybe a misunderstanding from Liz, that these were not allocated anywhere and that it was in a sense, just coming in as unidentified, um, my words, unidentified revenues, not allocated anything. So great, we've got these funding sources that we could then use in some mechanism, because it would be no negative effect on the schools and then no negative effect on the city, because it wasn't being earmarked for anything. Now, if indeed it is being earmarked for something, Glenn, we're getting to what you're saying. And which is somewhat of a concern that Christine had, and we talked with Diane when we met with her about it, was that so, you know, everybody seems to be in agreement that the schools are doing all the work to get these Medicaid funds. So what can we do to get the Medicaid funds to the schools? This is where now the discussion is, which is, okay, so if once it's identified, it's two hundred grand, our preference, not to speak for the school, for Christine and I, would be, there's a supplemental appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars done by the mayor, given to the schools and the schools, in a sense, budget is increased by two hundred grand. Cause then what that would allow us to do is we would then, because if say we're gonna, you know, our lot processes to use it for contracts would be, okay, so we get the two hundred thousand dollar supplemental appropriation, that comes part of our budget. We use less school choice than we have originally identified for operations where once contracts are settled, then we'll take those funds out of our school choice account per se. And again, my point of view was that just eliminates the the steps for, and also the issue of the fact that the sped stabilization fund has to be used for sped expenses. I consider my approach, what I'm recommending, in a sense, more streamlined. And still, I'll say, traceable wise and stuff and everything. So then, but then Glenn, you are absolutely right. Now we're at the point where that then therefore means that in a sense, the city's rev, it is not a net zero gain for everybody, because the city has been using Medicaid receipts as a general fund receipt being received in its whole collective pile of funds available.
Yeah, so there doesn't seem to be a surprise pool of money for us after all. That would be so nice. Okay.
Kate still has her hand raised.
All right, hit it, Kate.
I can get that mute button to come up. Um, I was just, um, wanting to get at the, I guess, philosophical underpinning of this. Um, Diana, you mentioned, um, parking as being, um, similar and correct me. similar, and correct me if I'm wrong, because the city shells out for parking enforcement and then the, the proceeds from that go into free cash, is that? Am I wrong?
Correct, no, correct, well, the, the, and I, I guess what I was saying is that we have a revolving fund, it, it's self-funding. Basically, the expenses come out of the, the, um, revenues and then the additional revenues just come to the city as receipts. So I'm not, yeah, and, and you're right, that the, the, but it's all self-funded in the fund.
So I was just, um, I was just kind of struck by that, because I mean, the pit, the, the city charges parking tolls for the purpose of making money for the city. Like, that's why we do it, but we don't provide services to disabled kids in the schools for, in order to provide revenue to the city. That's not why we do that. Um, and it seems pretty clear to me that the spirit of this Medicaid reimbursement is for supporting disabled kids, like that's the point. And so if the city's going to keep that money, then I would like to know what services is the city providing for disabled kids outside of the schools? Because I don't, I'm not aware of any. Uh, that, that money should be used for the purposes for which it was intended. Uh, and I would, I would posit that almost all, if not all, services to the kids who are, um, you know, eligible for Medicaid by way of their disability are provided by the schools and that money should be returned to the schools.
If I could, could I respond to that?
Of course.
So I'm here because, um, I agree. And I think that that's what I think Andy and Christine are both saying, I think, and I think the mayor does to an extent, to what you're saying. But to Andy's point, and thank you, Andy, for, for explaining that a bit. Um, you know, it's just a matter of now we have to look at the entire funding, the ability to fund. Um, and, and that includes funding the school and then, and, and then see what the effect is. So, and, and I'm simply saying, I guess, I'm here to say that I feel that this, and, and Andy, I totally understand Andy's perspective about streamlining. And that it would be a lot easier for this money to go into the, the larger pool of money to be spent as the school deems appropriate. If it's an additional appropriation, if it's a supplemental, I'm suggesting that if you have special education needs, that is in part of your, uh, what was sort of explained to me, and, and I do understand, um, you know, again, I've worked with different kinds of school districts, regional and local. Um, but that there's kind of this bottom line budget that you work with. And it's a, it's a made up of a lot of funding sources, including the city appropriation, but a lot of other grants and, and circuit breakers and other funding sources that come, you know, directly to the school. And so the bottom line is where, you know, you need to, to be. But that your special education costs were more than you're generally having available for that. Because you are spending into this year's circuit breaker money sometimes, or you're spending into these, this year's revenue. So when I was saying, you know, so I agree with you, with exactly what you're saying. I think it should be a set aside for the purpose of what it's intended for. And so that's why I do think the, to the end, that the reserve fund is the appropriate mechanism. And that it would go in the budget as a reserve fund when you are doing your initial budget proposal. Like in other words, when you bring forth your budget for FY24, it includes a reserve fund with the amount of money that we expect to get in Medicaid, Medicaid reimbursement this year. Which we, we, as Andy said, we have a fairly good, you know, it comes in all through the year, we have a fairly good estimate of what that is. And I think that looks different than if you ask for a supplemental appropriation that is just a general appropriation coming in. It, it leaves room for the appropriation, the annual appropriation to be, um, you know, it, it's going to be considered, it's all going to be an appropriation. It's not going to be like a reserve fund in your budget. So I do, I'm just saying that my perspective is that is going to look politically and practically different. And I feel is more, um, I don't know, I want to say appropriate, but I think it, it gives the school, it meets the school's needs, what you, what you need, if you need the money for special education. But if you don't, then, then, then maybe it doesn't, that's what I'm saying.
Diana, can I just rate, I guess, for a point of clarification that I, um, just heard you say that it was going to be part of the school's allocation. Which I understand, I guess either way, the funds could be part of the school's allocation. But I thought I understood when you were talking previously about Medicaid, that it goes into the free cash, which is in part used to fund our budget, like it's, it's a revenue for the city. So I guess in, in one way, I heard you say, if you, if the city gives that money to us as an added appropriation, you would have less money to fund our budget. But then I just heard you say that allocation is going to be part of our budget. So does, I guess, uh, which, which of those did I hear incorrectly? And as the person who has to access the funds to pay for the expenses, um, while I appreciate the additional funds available for special education, when I have to plan and, um, engage in, um, having conversations with the special ed director about services for students, I cannot do that pending a financial um, discussion with the city. I have to make, and she has to make special ed decisions based on the best interest of the child. So if that money is held in a position where I would require two votes to have access to it, it's not really available for us in our budget. Um, there is a potential that the city council could vote that request down. And so that's where I struggle with considering this to be actually part of the school department budget. If it is not truly available to us when it is needed, that's the piece where I, I have some concern.
Well, and let me, let me just, uh, speak to that a little bit more, because I have been here so long. Um, this is my sixth year on the school committee and which straddles two separate mayors. And, um, I was part of the contract negotiations with the, um, instructional assistants, which became something of a, a political tangle in town. And, um, the mayor, Bill Martin, was mayor at the time and we needed X amount of funds. Um, and they, you'll, you'll understand, there's a lot of history. The school district has consistently been accused of hiding money, which doesn't happen. Um, and and not being included when there are funds available, I'll say, equally. We've been wildly discriminated against. So all that aside, we spoke with the mayor and said, this is the amount that we would like. And, um, from the, the sub, cup, contract and whatever other funds that were available that had been moved from free cash. What he came back to us with was not what we had asked for and was what he felt was appropriate. And which wasn't enough. So then that went to city council and they said, yes, we're going to give you the amount that you need. In my naivete, I thought they meant the actual amount we needed, not the amount that the mayor thought we needed. And so my concern, not only with it, with having to go to city council, but I'm also concerned that the mayor will make their own decision about what they feel is appropriate, because we have money over here that we could be using, which isn't the case. And so that's another piece that concerns me quite a bit. And because it isn't fair to, at that point, it wasn't fair to, well, the district in total. Because we had ones that would have traditionally been used for educating our students that we had to use to pay for teachers. No, no, I'm not saying that that's not a worthy cause, however, it meant other things that we needed to do. That's all.
I, um, I wanted to talk more about this idea of putting this money in a reserve fund. Because as I understand it from how it was described previously, the idea of a reserve fund is for unanticipated expenses. Yes, well, I, I have a concern about that, because I don't think that the biggest issue is that we have, that we don't anticipate special education expenses. The issue is that the special education law is essentially an unfunded mandate. You know, the, the government, um, you know, passed the IDEA and then continues to fund only 15% of it. So we have anticipated special education needs that it, our constant struggle to, um, to fund, it creates all kinds of, um, strife between families that are trying to get services and accommodations that their children need. And the ability of the school to actually provide those things and therefore having to, um, uh, be to put it politely, conservative about that. And then we have kids who, uh, who don't get the free and appropriate public education they're entitled to because of their disability. And that's just sets up the district for future, um, like due process proceedings and things like that, that are, um, very expensive. Speaking of unexpected special education expenses, um, and I would also like to just, um, assert that special education students are general education students. So, um, the district's ability to use these funds to do things like pay teacher contracts directly affects those kids. Um, you know, the, these children need us to be able to attract and retain special education teachers. We have, uh, pretty terrible, um, teacher retention rate, the last time that I checked. And our, our ability to give them a good contract directly affects those kids. And, uh, also we are, um, in need of improving compensation for our instructional aides, um, which are, those are services that, yes, they are used by, um, by other kids. But by and large, they are really depended on by, um, disabled kids. So I would have concerns about this money being tied up in a reserve fund. I think, um, I think it needs to be available to the, to the school to use as it sees fit.
So I am not sure that the agenda item was intended for a final resolution, but to highlight the discussion that's being had, and I know that we have, um, unfortunately, some other scheduling conflicts. So I don't know, Susan, what, um, what additional information we can share or future, um, discussion you might want me to schedule?
Could I just say, thank you, um, for the feedback, that's so helpful. I really appreciate the discussion and understanding more, um, you know, the concerns. So, and I will, you know, we'll continue to have the discussion on our end and I'll keep in close contact with, um, the superintendent and Andy. You know, as we go forward, and we look forward to, you know, you guys, um, you know, getting, getting closer to getting budgets together. So we can all circle up and, and see where we go from there. But thank you so much, thanks for having me and letting me speak, thanks.
Thank you for coming to the meeting, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We all do. And if that, if we, we feel okay, I'm ready to call for adjourn, adjournment. If I could have a most, well, I'll make an emotion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
All right, me as well. So it is whatever time it is.
Uh, 10:04.
Okay, it's 10:04 and we are adjourning. Thank you, everyone, for your attending. I think this was a valuable discussion, I think there are a lot of larger implications beyond just what this funding, this amount of money would do. I think there needs to be a change in how, anyway, we've adjourned, I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone, for attending.